Guys, it is 12:35. We're gonna get started on time because we have three amazing speakers. I want to make sure that we give them their due time to be able to not only speak to you, but to answer any questions that you have. So again, welcome. Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Massand and I'm the Executive Director for Chamber South. And I am so, so, so thrilled to have you all join us today and to have these amazing speakers with us, our newly elected and appointed commissioners for our South Dade community. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce our Chairwoman of our Board of Directors here at Chamber South, Ms. Dalen Rodriguez. Dalen, you're up.
I'm here. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Brittany, for that very gracious introduction. I'm very excited, as Brittany just said, to have a very exciting presentation today with our newly elected commissioners. Thank you again for giving us your time. We really appreciate it. As you know, South Dade and the Greater South Dade area is very important to our chamber particularly, but I'm sure to the community at large and to you that now are tasked to lead us. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce our first speaker this morning, Raquel Regalado. She is the first Miami-born Hispanic woman elected to the Miami Dade County Commission. As a community leader, she's most known for her strong advocacy for disabled children and adults, housing, seniors, fixing school facilities, and transportation. In 2010, dissatisfied with public education options for children with disabilities, she ran for and was elected to the Miami Dade County School Board, representing District 6. In her six years on the nine-member school board, she championed programs and services for special needs children and adults, as well as the district's technology needs, and became the face of a successful bond initiative to invest in updating and building public schools throughout Miami Dade County. A very, very busy six years. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Raquel Regalado, Commissioner for Miami Dade County, District 7.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And thank you for that gracious introduction. There's so many things to talk about. We're so excited that there is this dramatic change at the county commission. You know, we have several attorneys. I think we're six under 50 now. And for those that don't remember, Miami Dade County approved term limits in 2012. So a lot of people wonder, you know, why this dramatic shift. This is the greatest change in the Board of County Commissioners since the inception of districts. And I'm thrilled to be here with my two colleagues who are doing a wonderful job as Miami Dade County Commissioners. We're part of a new group and a new generation of Miamians that really want to change the conversation and definitely change the pace of how Miami Dade County works and responds. So really quickly, you mentioned autism. I have to start with that. And I have to thank my colleagues for supporting an item that I brought to our last meeting. Miami Dade is actually gonna roll out the largest inclusion program of any county government in the United States. It's gonna include parks, transportation, police, fire, and our library system. It's gonna have social stories and signage, and most importantly, training for every single employee that comes in contact with a neurodivergent person. We're very excited about this work. We're partnering with U M N S U Card and several other organizations. And the idea is to roll out in April and really provide a model for how to include neurodivergent people in public spaces because historically, they have not been allowed access. And during the pandemic, they have been most impacted in terms of lack of access to public space. So we're really excited about that and stay tuned for that rollout in April. I would be remiss if we didn't start talking about the pandemic, you know? There's so many things that I want to discuss, especially since now we have our committee assignments. We're each gonna talk a little, I assume, about what we plan to do in our committees, a little prelude to what you're gonna see at the county commission in our meeting of the Policy Council on Thursday. But one of the things I wanted to start with is the eviction issue and rental assistance. So one of the first items and issues that I brought to the board had to do with the misuse of the CARES Act in terms of rental assistance. You know, I asked our county mayor to lift a cap on the landlords and to really have a conversation about how the CARES Act funding was not properly allocated to rental assistance and how our issues with evictions and the failure to provide adequate rental assistance was not only impacting our policy to keep people in their homes during the pandemic, but was also gonna have an impact on us long-term in terms of our commercial property values. While on the school board, I was tasked with reforming the Value Adjustment Board. I worked on the Value Adjustment Board for two years. Back then, it was Commissioner Juan Zapata, the current Chair of the County Commission, Pepe Diaz and I. And we had over 50 meetings. I wrote the policies and procedures of the Value Adjustment Board and really tried to course correct. The county at that point was two years behind on property values. And it was negatively impacting the school district that I represented at that moment. We tried in Tallahassee to change it and finally made the changes at the county commission. So when I speak about property values, I speak not only as an attorney who works in construction and real estate, but also as someone who served as an executive member of the FAB for a very long time. So we're gonna be receiving at the Board of County Commissioners the initial estimates on value adjustments in June. And one of the things that we're already seeing is that, you know, people are going directly to the property appraisers. And my concern from the beginning has been that property values of commercial properties, unlike residential, is not established by sales, but established by revenues. So every landlord that you have, every retail establishment that you have that is not receiving rent, is now gonna have the opportunity to go to the property appraiser and lower their assessment. That lowering of the assessment is not just automatic and impacts this product this next fiscal year, but it also has a cap. So it's not that next year, if revenues go up, it goes up. It goes up incrementally, right? So this is something that is gonna impact our system for three to four years from when that reduction is done. So that being said, one of the first items that I brought to the board, which was also supported by my colleagues, was providing the county with data, specifically data directly from the clerk of the court. I believe that this data is gonna be useful not only to the Board of County Commissioners and to the homeless trusts who are gonna be receiving it, but also to chambers like yourself. Because what we're doing is we're taking the information directly from the clerk of the court on evictions. We're providing it on a monthly basis. We're also providing information on the writs of possession. And all that information is gonna be provided to us also by zip code. So you'll be able to see what is happening in your particular zip code. And that is not only important in terms of determining rental assistance, but as an economic marker. We know that evictions and foreclosures are tremendous predictors of what's gonna happen with our local economy. And one of the things that I hope that we do moving forward as a board is really work from data and data collection as opposed to from feelings or from, you know, an organization told me or we believe that we have a need next YZ. So this is the first step, and it's timely because we do have a $60.3 million allocation from the federal government that's gonna come directly through the Department of Children's and Family for rental assistance. We're working on three proposals right now that deal with that, and that will be coming to the county commission shortly. And we're also trying to see how we can help those that are currently protected by the CDC order, which now has been extended to March 31st. So stay tuned for that because it's really something that's impacting the South Dade community. South Dade, it has one of the highest level of foreclosures and happy to send you that data so that you guys can look at it. But not only do we have issues in South Dade in terms of foreclosures in the system, but we also know that South Dade has a lot of folks that are not paying rent and that have not filed for foreclosure. So we have a lot of people in the pipeline, right, that are coming up on this point and just haven't taken that step because they believe that the moratorium in particular prevents them from having release. So the other issue that we have to talk about is obviously vaccines, vaccines, vaccines. My colleagues and I have been inundated with everything vaccine, and I'm sure that you guys have too, you know, have as well. We're hoping to get on our February agenda, an item that creates a comprehensive list countywide. This is something I've been talking about for over two months. It was first done in Manatee County. Brower is also doing it, and the state of Florida is doing it. You know, we need to know how many of our residents 65 and older are interested in vaccines. The only way to do that is with a comprehensive list. I'm also suggesting the use of Everbridge or similar technology to text those individuals that are on this list once vaccines are available. Because this idea of asking people 65 and older to follow us on social media and to sit in front of their computers for seven to eight hours hoping that the Jackson portal opens, it is completely insane. It does not connect the audience with the medium, and we hope to change that. I know that there's some other items on the agenda that are gonna have to do with 3-1-1 and that the chairman has also been talking about different modalities and how we can be more effective, more efficient. And then to our committees, I'm honored to be the Chairman of Infrastructure. My Vice Chair is Commissioner Cohen Higgins. I'm looking forward to working with her on infrastructure. As you mentioned, Ms. Rodriguez, I spent many years at the school board dealing with our infrastructure projects and loved every minute of it. You know, I always tell people, I never thought that construction would make me so happy. And then I was made Chair of Capital Improvement, and it was really a wonderful time. And I'm looking forward to doing it at the county. We're gonna be actually having a very aggressive agenda in terms of looking at the CIP. I've talked about the CIPs for different departments for some time, and now in this committee, we'll have the ability to go department by department, really analyzing what's happening and what we should consider in terms of the pandemic. Obviously, we are gonna be dealing with water and sewer, which is under, you know, this jurisdiction. I've been talking about septic to sewer for years. I'm so excited that everyone now is finally on board. And I know that it also impacts the area of South Dade. We're working on several items that have to do with septic to sewer, but we were waiting for Irela Maguay to be named. Now she's our Chief Bay Officer, and she's gonna bring her agenda. I know that Commissioner Ramita Sosa also has several agenda items that have to do with the implementation of the Biscayne Bay Report. We're gonna be bringing not just issues that have been brought up in those reports, but also a few new ideas in terms of what we can do, you know, to ensure that we have water quality. So look out for that. We're really excited about a few projects that we're gonna be doing, hopefully in District 7, with the support of the board. So water quality, and then we're also gonna be working on permitting. For those of you that work in the area of construction, one of the things that we've seen is not only is the construction industry the only industry that has done amazing work in terms of profits and time during the pandemic, but we've also all gone digital. The Miami Dade County started the digitization of its plans years ago and then abandoned it. Miami Beach tried it. The City of Miami started it, and then came the pandemic. And finally, legacy plans were all digitized, and now we're moving forward with electronic signatures. And we're gonna be looking step by step at the permitting process, not just for Wassa and Durham, but for all of Miami Dade County building and aligning it with what's happening at the cities and ensuring that we can get things done as soon as possible and that we understand that the sooner these projects come on the pipeline, the sooner Miami Dade County can collect taxes. So it will be, you know, an analysis of what happens from when you get that first permit to when you get your certificate of occupancy and what can be standing in the way, what can be done virtually, and what do we want to do in person. For example, we know that fire needs to be done in person, but there's a lot of things that have gone digital that have worked very well, and we're gonna be keeping some of those practices. And then economic development, I'm on that committee also. We're excited that the airport also includes economic development. Economic development has kind of been the redheaded stepchild of Miami Dade County Government. So I think now that it's paired with the airport, it might get a little bit of love, and I hope to be part of that. When I was at the school board, one of the reasons that I ran for Mayor Miami Dade County in 2016 was my frustration with the lack of vocational training and the failure to align the workforce and really have a conversation about intellectual capital, right? So, you know, I criticized then the Beacon Council and really talked about how we needed to move away from a model that was based in a pre-internet kind of world and really move forward, talking about intellectual capital and doing what the state of Florida had done in terms of establishing goals and metrics and saying, okay, well, these people are in our educational system. Let's find what our industry needs and how we can better train them. Because as we know from Jeb Bush and Pinnacle, and we've seen over and over and over again, and you guys know this as a chamber, it's one thing to get a company to come. It's another thing to get them to stay. And we're having the same exact conversation now with this tech thing. I was talking about this in 2010. You can get a tech company to come, but if you don't have coders, you can't get them to stay. So we know that intellectual capital has always been our issue. The other issue that we have is the lack of affordability of housing. At our last commission meeting, our board spoke almost unanimously on wanting a workshop and really a broader conversation about what can be done countywide as opposed to this piecemeal application of not just infill, but kind of scattered projects throughout Miami Dade County. So we're looking forward to that, but really, we have to align things. We have to ensure that we have the right personnel, right, for the businesses that we're trying to attract. And especially now during the pandemic, where we've seen that we have job openings, but people don't want them, and that a lot of people who were in a system and really surviving as low-wage workers or as gig workers have now decided that that may be a risk too great to bear, right? So we're gonna have to retool these folks, and we hope to work with the Beacon Council and the different... There's actually three committees in Miami Dade County that deal with this kind of work. And then also with the universities, I've already met with them to talk about vocational training and sort of how we can align the certification and get people certified, everything from technology to construction. And we're looking at other different areas that now mean that were popular before, and now after the pandemic, like cosmetology are not as popular as they were in the past. There's also a language barrier, which I know you guys deal with in South Dade. We are gonna be talking about that also. And then I think I'm almost done, but finally, really, really excited about doing some work in terms of synergy, you know, within departments. Miami Dade County has been a little dysfunctional in that sense, and all of us here support and represent areas of unincorporated Miami Dade. You know, as someone that lives in the city, it really is dramatic, right? The difference between a municipal area and an incorporated area. So we've been doing a lot of work in our district, really reaching out to our residents in unincorporated Miami Dade and aligning some of those best practices at the municipal level and bringing them to unincorporated areas. So we look forward to working on a few beautification projects on different issues that has to do with walkability and bikeability. District 7 is blessed to... Plan for Chapman Field, but we have the Love Lum Trail. We have Old Cutler. So one of the things that you'll see in the next few weeks is more about walkability, bikeability, connectivity, and pedestrian safety. So really excited about the work that we're gonna do at the county commission. And as always, thank you for the opportunity here to serve.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. A lot of useful information, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of people asking on the chat some follow-up questions, which will take part in at the end of our conversation today, but I really appreciate it. So thank you again. Just quick housekeeping items. I forgot to mention it at the beginning. Make sure that we are on mute as our presenters are going ahead and doing their sections, please. And if you have any questions, like I said, please go ahead and put them on the chat, and we're gonna have a Q and A session at the end of today's meeting. So without further ado, it's my pleasure now to introduce Danielle Cohen Higgins, who's a mother, attorney, and small business owner proudly representing District 8 on the Miami Dade County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Cohen Higgins is committed to providing excellent service to constituents with transparency and accountability. She is also focused on bringing forth innovative solutions and meaningful policies to overcome the COVID-19, public health, and economic crises, addressing severe affordability challenges, which are pricing families out of our county, supporting common sense environmental sustainability measures, and bringing effective transit solutions to the residents of District 8. Very exciting. And now the Honorable Danielle Cohen Higgins, Commissioner for Miami Dade County, District 8.
Thank you very much. It's such a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank the leaders of Chamber South for putting this forum together. I think it's important that we keep the lines of communication open and that you have access to your commissioners to ask questions. So I thank you for giving us this opportunity, and I want to thank my colleagues who are on the line and Commissioner Regalado, who did a wonderful presentation. You know, she mentioned at the beginning that, you know, there is a change at the county commission. And it is a change that has not been seen before in the history of the county. There are a lot of new commissioners, and there are a lot of new ideas and fresh perspectives. I am very excited to be a part of this group of commissioners, and I hope everyone on this call is excited as well. There is tremendous opportunity when you have so many new commissioners coming in with very, very bold and fresh ideas. I also think it's worth noting that so many of the commissioners coming in are attorneys as well. I being one of them, and I think that that will help as far as advocacy and helping move some of these critical issues that our county is now facing. I see a lot of familiar faces on this call. Hello to everyone. It's great to see friends like Ed Williamson and Peter England and others on this call that I'm very familiar with. For those of you that I have not met, my name is Danielle Cohen Higgins. I am a mother. I am a lawyer, and I have been a business owner for the last 11 years. I've been a trial attorney for the last 15. I am a proud product of our Miami Dade community. I was born at Jackson Memorial Hospital. I attended all Miami Dade County public schools, and for a very short time at the beginning of my life, I lived in our public housing. So I say, I'm a product of our public hospital. I attended all of our public schools. I lived in our public housing. And now I have the incredible honor of serving as a public servant. You know, it is an honor, but it's also a tremendous responsibility, especially when we consider where we are right now as a county. I'm gonna go over some of my legislative priorities and some of the wins that we've already been able to accomplish early, early, early in this seat. But I can't talk about anything without first talking about what I know is top of mind for everyone on this call and all of our families is the confusion and the chaos regarding where we are with this pandemic and the vaccines. And we have been very active and very vocal from the beginning in trying to put forward legislation to help move the needle on some of these issues, be very vocal with our residents. We send out emails regularly. If you're not part of our email list, please don't hesitate to let me know. We will add you to the list. We are trying to give out as much information as we possibly can, as regularly as we can, because we recognize that right now, the information being disseminated as it pertains to vaccines is limited. It's on electronic mediums, on Twitter and online, and not all of our residents have access to those electronic means. So we're doing everything we can to try and broaden the scope of access to this critical information that all of our residents need. At the very first Board of County Commission meeting, I brought forth legislation asking our mayor to work with us to look at at-home testing, primarily to look at those who don't have access to vehicles in our community. What about those who don't have access to transportation to drive through and get tested on a regular basis? At that time, there was newly approved testing that I want our county to look at and explore whether or not that at-home testing for the coronavirus can be explored and offered to our residents. And thankfully, that legislation passed and it passed unanimously. At our most recent board meeting, again, focusing on this pandemic and on the coronavirus, you know, I was concerned with the fact that our teachers, our law enforcement, our transit drivers were not being prioritized to receive the vaccine. The message was very clear from our governor at the beginning of this pandemic. About one year ago, they were deemed essential workers. When we were told to stay home, shelter at home, hunker down, our law enforcement, our teachers, our transit workers had to go back out and go to work. They were deemed essential then, and it was my position that they need to be deemed essential now. And so thankfully to my colleague, we were able to unanimously pass at the last board meeting a resolution urging our governor to make sure that teachers, law enforcement, and other frontline essential workers are on that priority list for the next round of vaccinations. You know, people asked whether or not it was a ceremonious resolution, and I argued that it was not ceremonious in that Miami Dade County is the largest county. We have 67 counties in the state of Florida. We need to use our voice and use it collectively to send messages to our governor, to say, we as a county feel this way, and we urge you to do certain things. And thankfully, that passed unanimously as well. You know, economic development is something that I am focused on. As a small business owner for the last 11 years, I understand the struggles that we are all facing through this pandemic. Most of us probably had a very successful 2019. Most of us probably had a very difficult 2020. And as small business owners, we are trying to figure out what decisions to make, what moves to make to keep our businesses afloat, to keep our employees employed, and to keep food on their table. And so economic development for South Dade is a priority for me. And so I was proud to sponsor legislation, supporting the mayor of the City of Miami in his effort to bring tech to Miami Dade County. And what does that mean when we say bring tech to Miami Dade County? There's been a lot of buzz, a lot of coverage, and a lot of chatter about large technological companies moving their headquarters to Miami Dade because they're fed up with Silicon Valley or they're fed up with San Francisco. And what are we doing as a county to attract them and to retain them, as Commissioner Regalado absolutely correctly alluded to? Once they get here, are we prepared and where will they go? I introduced legislation, and again, it passed unanimously, thankfully, working with our mayor to prepare a plan for these companies that are already here and are already coming to make sure that we as a county don't squander this opportunity and that we are making sure that these companies are headquartering in places that are gonna be beneficial to the entire county, not just the city of Miami. So I obviously would like for South Dade to receive some or more of these headquarters from these tech companies. And so thankfully, that passed, and that's just at its infancy and beginning stages. We've been talking about tech in Miami Dade County for years, but it sounds as though it's taking on traction. I'm very, very proud to support that. Other initiatives that have to be discussed, and you know, and my colleagues, we probably will all agree. We ran on certain key initiatives, and then the pandemic hit, which completely shifted everything for us. So all of us are likely gonna talk about this pandemic, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So I talk about pre-pandemic. You know, we can't represent South Dade and not talk about transportation. And so I have a lot of very small projects within District 8 that I look forward to pushing forward because yes, we can talk about rail and we can talk about BRT, but there are a number of small projects in the district that will help mitigate some of the traffic issues that we deal with every single day. It's certainly better now. We all recognize that our commute is far more agreeable and pleasant, but it is inevitable that we will get back to the gridlock, and it will be an impossible journey for us very, very shortly. You know, in addition, I plan to tackle issues as it pertains to government spending. At the last Board of County Commission meeting, I was very direct and I was very blunt about serious concerns as it pertains to our spending. I understand capital projects, and I understand that we need to spend money in certain areas, and we're a huge county. We have a $9 billion budget, you know? But where I come from, when I see numbers like $100 million for vehicles and $54 million for furniture, and again, to be clear, not $100 million on vehicles to be spent every 10 years or every 20 years. These are regular spends coming through. What I will not support is a year from now, when our budget is having a very difficult time, when our budget is strained, what I will not do is I will not vote to raise taxes. I will not vote to lay off employees. And instead, now I want us to pay very close attention to what we are spending money on and what we can pass on spending on to make sure that in a year from now, in a year and a half from now, we are as prepared as humanly possible to make sure that we're protecting our employees and to make sure that we are not raising taxes on our residents. We have all been taxed enough figuratively from this pandemic. We cannot, as a county government, consider raising taxes on our residents. You know, equity and inclusion is another initiative that is very important to me. As you get into a role like becoming a county commissioner, you learn a lot. There is a tremendous wealth of knowledge to learn at the county commission, and you realize that there's also a lot of room for improvement. And as it pertains to disparities on race, inclusion, contracting with our Miami Dade County, why is the Miami Dade School Board have an initiative that includes contracting for minorities, whereas the county does not have nearly as strong of an initiative? These are things that I look forward to championing, bringing to the attention of the board, and revisiting to see if we can't make strides to more equitable distribution of contracts to minorities in our county. You know, finally, human trafficking is a major issue for the residents of South Dade. It may not affect any of us on this call, but it's unbelievable the amount of human trafficking that is happening in our backyard in South Dade. I just left the press conference at our police department where federal agents and Freddie Ramirez were there, and they were giving me examples of a home that they just located recently in District 8, where a 600-square-foot home had 15 people living in it, and all of them were being trafficked. This is happening in our backyard. There is a new campaign that launched today as it pertains to bringing awareness to this critical issue, and I look forward to helping with that effort. You know, there are many issues facing our county, but I do want a message that I think that now is a time that we have never seen at our board in that we are united, we are strong, and we are all focused on moving the needle as a county. Prior to the new commissioners coming onto the board, there was discussion of fiefdoms and people only being, you know, focused on their own district. I feel like that energy has passed. The commissioners are working together. It's not just my opinion. People have called me to say, I feel like there's a new energy at the commission, and I believe that to be true, and I hope that that energy and that synergy persists. It may be as a result of this global health crisis that we all find ourselves in. Maybe we're coming together for that, but whatever has brought us together to bring a unified voice to the residents of Miami Dade County, I certainly hope that it continues. So I have been working very, very hard. I will continue to work very, very hard. I know Commissioner McGee is gonna follow me, and I know he's gonna champion transportation issues. You know, I like to say that our county line does not end at Dade Land because it does not. And with leaders like Commissioner Regalado and leaders like Commissioner McGee and myself, we will use our voices collectively to bring South Dade and put us on the map to make sure we... to bring South Dade and put us on the map, to make sure we get our fair share, to make sure economic development comes to South Dade. We are no longer and will not continue to be the ugly stepchild of Miami-Dade County. Again, my name is Commissioner Danielle Cohen Higgins. It is my pleasure and my honor uh to serve the residents of District Eight. I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. That was all, again, useful information. It's amazing how much work um you already have on your agenda and how much work you guys are already putting in. So we're very thankful and appreciative. Um, now we have, uh, last but not least, uh, Kiani McGee, who grew up in South Dade Public Housing and went on to earn a bachelor's degree from Howard University and a Juris Doctorate from the Thurgood Marshall School of Law. He was first elected to the Florida House of Representatives in twenty twelve for Florida House District One Seventeen and served as the minority leader from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty twenty, when he was elected as Miami-Dade County Commissioner for District Nine. His numerous affiliations include the Florida Trial Lawyers Association, Wilkie D. Ferguson Bar Association, and the Greater Miami Service Corps, where he serves as a board member. He is also president and founder of Do Not Media and Publishing, founder of VAO, which is Young Advocates Leading by Example, and president of Transitions, Inc. He has been named one of Miami's rising voices by AT&amp;T and the Miami Herald and earned the self, the Florida Self-Sufficiency Award in twenty ten. Now it's my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Kiani McGee, Commissioner for Miami-Dade County, District Nine.
Thank you, Delene. I very much appreciate this opportunity. And to my colleagues, uh, Raquel and Danielle, let's be absolutely clear. I think you all made a hint towards it. But the reality of it is, is this the first time in Miami-Dade County's history, I believe, uh, seven, eight, and nine uh on, are on the same page uh fighting for the people and the people who um, we, who entrusted us with their vote and with their, uh, with their future plans for their own families. Uh, secondly, let me thank the chambers. Thank you very much. Uh, you took out time from your busy schedule uh to bring us forward uh to hear what we have to say and to do it in a way that the entire community uh can have uh interactions with us. Uh, and thirdly, let me just say this. Um, I think each and every last one of you uh who thought of that robbery uh to allow for me uh to serve as your commissioner here in District Nine. Um, this is one of the most honorable positions um I could have ever thought of. But the fact that you all uh gave me a vote of confidence uh to record, to um represent you on the county commission uh truly means a lot and it's not lost on me. But let me just absolutely say this, and I'll begin um with this, with this phrase. Um, everything I do, um, it's, there are four principles I am, that I am operating within those parameters. Uh, faith, family, flag, and future. Uh, those are the principles I ran on. Those are the principles I believe. But more than anything, those are the principles I live my life by. I do not believe uh that government should be in the business of doing business uh when there are private companies, other organizations, uh, other CBOs uh that can do a far better job than what uh local government or statewide government or federal government um are doing at any particular time. I do believe the number one issue that we have heard from my two colleagues without a question is COVID. And if we're really honest with ourselves, uh, we must admit um that both uh the state, of the county, and the previous administration on a federal level have done a horrible job as it relates to ensuring um the vaccinations uh make it to the destination for those people who are truly in need of it. Secondly, we would also agree that as it relates to resources for our landlords uh and our tenants, um, their rental assistance programs thus far have not hit the mark, and it should be revisited. Uh, third, we should look at the reality that uh our county government, along with our state officials there, um, they're not synchronized in their uh understanding, but also the distribution of the vaccination sites um and a plan that will actually benefit us as a whole. Uh, fourth, when we look at and hear about um the catastrophes as it relates to the rollout of the vaccinations and the testing sites, you come to realize that more has to be done. But it has to be done in a way where we're not increasing the size of government and we're not raising taxes and we're not putting this on the backs of our great people here in Miami-Dade County. I'm happy to say that um through the chair, um, who uh appointed me to lead um our COVID response, our COVID policy, I am heading the um, what I call the HEMAC, uh, the Health Emergency Management and Intergovernmental Affairs. And in that committee, I will um provide um an omnibus resolution uh that will address the issues that my colleagues have so eloquently laid out. We're talking about foreclosures. We're talking about transportation. We're talking about economic development. We're talking rental assistance. We're talking about um, 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 income. Uh, those who are on the low-income spectrum. I'm gonna uh release that policy, that rollout very soon, once I get more buy-in from my colleagues. Um, and it's hopefully that particular resolution will help guide the discussion, but also lead to the results that I believe our county um is entitled to from those of us who sit in position uh to help our county. Um, early wins, I can tell you that I believe that we have to still do more. Um, I'm a big animal fan. Um, I do not believe uh that Miami-Dade County uh should be in the business of euthanizing animals, particularly our dogs and our cats. I do believe in rescues. I do believe that if we're really serious about moving our county forward, we must address the reality that there are still too many animals uh by far um who have been um, um prematurely um transitioned to another world uh due to our inability to appreciate um their lives. That's therefore, I push forward a resolution uh that officially uh made Miami-Dade County a no-kill um uh shelter here uh that will take place uh beginning next year. Um, we expect uh that we will hit that threshold in no time. I am working with um, um, animal organizations to make sure that we uh coordinate with rescues all across this nation, to make sure that if they ever want to come down to the Sunshine State, uh, when they finally do get here, they can take back with them a, a pet that they can adopt. Um, something that we believe is very important because they, uh, overall, um, although our animal shelter here, the Miami-Dade Animal Shelter here, um, has done a great job in reducing the amount of um transitions that they have um inflicted upon uh some of our animals here. But I do believe there's always room for growth, and my job is to ensure that that growth happens um in an expedited manner and not a slow manner. Um, secondly, let me just say this to you also. The federal qualified health centers have been, in my humble opinion, um, denied um a real seat at the table. But we talk about vaccinations. We talk about uh testing sites. We're talk, we talk about the disparities. We talk about low-income individuals. But the, 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 the organizations and the companies that are actually dealing with every last one of those factors that I've just mentioned, are people such as those who are the community action agencies, the federal qualified health centers uh in our local communities. I don't see why it takes government so long uh to realize that, when in fact, these organizations can do a far better job than what we can do on any given day. Uh, what they are missing is a clear directive. And the omnibus bill resolution that we're going to present uh will address that. It will also give them the authority to make decisions. It will also help give them resources to move the needle forward. As many of you have witnessed, we've tried to do that as a government. But once again, government has failed on that front. And I do believe it's time now that government gives a clear directive. And that clear directive must be to empower the local agencies, the local organizations, and the local businesses so that they too can have a buy-in at the table. And finally, before I turn it over, there, you know, without question, there are two uh major factors here in the South Dade community that it appears, and oftentimes I hear other colleagues talking about it, is that there are two Miamis. There are two Miami-Dade Counties. There's the North Miami-Dade County, north of Dade Land. And then there is the South Miami-Dade County. And since nineteen ninety-seven, um, the South Miami-Dade County has been treated like the redhead um, 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 pushover. Um, and it's wrong. And I am here to tell you that um I will, along with my colleagues, lead to fight to at least push forward. Um, the narrative that we too belong in the conversation in Miami-Dade County as it relates to economic development. And I do believe, in order for us to make that, that argument and make that narrative, it cannot be something of, of using an argument that was made in nineteen ninety-seven that was a song and dance that they're now preparing to perpetuate against us again. And I do not believe at this moment that a BRT system uh will get us to the promised land of equity as it relates to Miami-Dade County. We have the Everglades. We have the Viscane Bay. We have access to the Florida Keys. We have hard-working people here. We have the agricultural community here. And we just simply want to say that we want the seat at the table. And to say that we should now board another bus similar to the promise of a BRT that was given to us in nineteen ninety-seven in order to save money, it's, it's, it's not only um, uh, a position or a proposition that will set us back another twenty years, but it's a, it's a false narrative with two false conclusions. So my position is very simple. If we're really talking about economic development in the south along the corridors, I am pushing for the transit-oriented developments along the corridor. I am pushing to increase the density along the corridors. I am pushing the reality that if we are to make this work, we look at the possibility of having rail. It may not be to able, we may not be able to build out the entire twenty miles of rail initially. But what we can do, what we can do, we can work towards the twenty miles. We can bring the rail south to Cutter Bay, and we can then begin with BRT to the south. And then we can convert the south BRT years down the road um in order to meet up with the northern part of our South Dade District rail. So we can, we can create a hybrid easily. The cost that the county has pushed out, it is always going to be higher, especially when they don't want it. It is always going to take more time when they don't want it. It's only when they want something, it makes financial sense, and the time is not a factor. If we look to our north, we notice that areas in Aventura are already in line to getting rail. We know that there's a RFP issue for rail and, and a North Dade area. We know the beach has already gotten, um, you know, the approval for its monorail. And we also are aware that uh in Orlando, Brightline has built out, i- it's in the process of building out a rail line of twenty miles from the Orlando Airport uh to Disney World. And the price tag for that is south, south of four hundred million dollars. And they have to purchase the right of way. So when I hear um government officials saying that it's going to be too expensive to bring the rails to South Dade, I just want you to remember that, you know, politicians' jobs um include two matters. One is, they will make you afraid of something, and they will always blame, find something to blame it on or somebody to blame it on. We gotta move away from that. I am truly optimistic that the South Dade community, with the fact that we have three intelligent, hard-working, um, um, resilient, um, and relentless um fighters who are standing there guarding the gates to the south, I am optimistic. We're going to see some things we haven't seen in a long time. We just simply ask that you have patience. The final thing I want to touch on before I turn the floor over. Um, you know, we talk about uh equity. And I said earlier, we, we act as if we are in two Miami-Dade Counties. Gun violence is real. Gun violence is real in the South Dade community. As a matter of fact, it's real in Miami-Dade County. Gun violence is a health issue. And we tried everything but understanding it through the lenses of health. As the chairman of the Health Committee, that will also be dealing with the emergency management, I intend to push forth some policy that will deal with this from a health standpoint. Because until we look at it from those lenses, we're going to miss a great factor that would give us an understanding of how to combat and deal with what's happening. I know some people want to make it seem as if it's just a poor. It's some, some people want to make it seem like if it's those who are low-income or those who live in public housing that are causing the havoc. But I tend to challenge that and say, we are all responsible for it. Because when we turn a blind eye to it or we drive through those communities and try not to look at it or try not to make eye contact with those individuals in the community, we tend to find ourselves basically contributing to the uh quagmire that they're living in. And it is upon us um to look at this hol- holistically and come up with a comprehensive plan that will finally deal with it. And I can tell you right now, from all the conversations we've had, from all the doors we've knocked on, everyone is in agreement that until we're able to expose the younger kids here and until we are exposed, able to push them out, to allow for them to see a better life, until we change the transportation mode that will actually be very attractive to them to want to be on something that makes sense, that can get them to Broward County or get them to the beach or get them to Palm Beach County, we are just recreating the same narrative that has gotten them to the problem that we're seeing. So I'll go ahead and um, um, shut up and uh, uh, listen to the questions um that many are going to ask. But those are the plans that we're working on, and those are going to be um, um, the agenda items uh for the next two years uh that I will lead through the Policy Committee. And when I say omnibus, I mean omnibus. This is going to be something huge, and it's going to be something that will encompass the um ideas um and the solutions uh that our colleagues have also.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Um, so we're going to get into questions right now, but for a minute, all of our commissioners up here. Okay, so before I get into the questions, I just want to say, um, obviously, we, we constantly hear from our partners and from our businesses and from, you know, the business associations, the EDC, all of our other chambers and um partners here in South Dade that were often overlooked in, in the Miami-Dade County general scheme of things, that South Dade was overlooked. And right now I do want to say to echo all of your comments, it's so inspiring to know that we have such a dedicated group of public servants who are going to be working really, really diligently for the best interests of our South Dade community. Um, so that means that we're going to get into a couple of questions. You know, we don't have that much time, so we're gonna, if we can keep the answers brief or if uh appropriate, put more information in the chat, whether it's a website or, or direction to, or way to get more information, um, just so we can get through the questions and we're still considering everyone's time. So the first question is for Commissioner Regalado. You mentioned some changes in the property tax reviews twenty twenty and the value adjustment board. Where can small business owners find additional information on this process, and are there any helpful tips that you can share with them?
Sure, sure. Really quick. So I put my email on there. Uh, if you want to email me, it's districtseven@miamidade.gov. Uh, right now, because of the pandemic, you do not have to go through the value adjustment board process. You can go directly to the property appraiser's office. Uh, now that you've closed out in your fiscal year, what you need to provide him with is your revenue information. A decrease in revenue in commercial property is directly equivalent to a decrease in property values for commercial property, right? So it's just a matter of calling us. We can put you in contact with the property appraiser and get you an appointment. Or you can call them directly, whatever you like. Uh, happy to walk you through it. My staff knows the, the, the whole deal. Uh, and you just need to get that paperwork in and submit for that reduction in commercial property value. We're also working with Ben Garcia on two bills in Tallahassee that will provide people with more time to pay their property taxes. That's in the works.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, Commissioner Regalado. Uh, this is, I think, for all three commissioners. What plans are there to address or mitigate the very real negative impacts of Big Tech, lack of affordable housing, transit issues, impact on the Everglades, and most importantly, displacement of families? And I don't know how you're going to briefly answer that question, but um the floor is yours.
Well, really quick, I mean, at our last three meetings, we've actually talked about this broad view uh of, you know, county issues. What are the problems that I think all three of us have? Uh, because we've mentioned it from the day, it's kind of this parochial view, uh, you know, commission district by commission district. Uh, so we're already working on an affordable housing workshop where we're going to be talking about county-wide initiatives instead of district by district. Uh, we're on transit. Uh, we all sit on the TPO. Uh, we are, two of us already brought items to the TPO. We have another TPO meeting uh this week, so I think we're all very engaged in terms of transit. Uh, and then finally, in terms of displacement and economic development, I mean, we really have to take on what the, there's organizations that are tasked to do this work. Uh, I mentioned the Beacon Council because the Beacon Council is an offshoot of the chamber. Uh, and in the last few years, it's becoming a chamber, right? It's not a chamber. It's an economic engine. It's supposed to be doing other work. So I think a lot of what we're going to see with this new commission is kind of a retooling, uh, making sure that everybody is doing the tasks that they're supposed to be doing.
Commissioner Higgins or McGee, would you want to weigh in on that question?
I, I can, I can tell you, Commissioner Regalado, she nailed it. Yeah, I think, I think I don't have anything to add to that, but she nailed it for us, for me especially.
So, um, Commissioner Higgins, I'm going to address this one to you because it's specifically regarding District Eight. Uh, Eddie Montevallo from Sea Hunter Boats and Silver Wings Aerospace employs over four hundred residents, uh, primarily in District Eight, and he agrees- And he agrees, of course, we need to recruit new businesses specifically to District Eight. But how can the new commission improve the experience of current employers trying to expand?
What a wonderful question. And I'm sorry, could you, Brittany, could you repeat the name of the business owner? Was it Eddie?
Eddie Montavalo from Sea Hunter Boats and Silver Wings Aerospace.
Hi, Eddie. Good afternoon. Thank you for that awesome question. Moreover, thank you for employing, you know, over 400 of our residents. I know that that is not a a small feat. Regarding how we can encourage and promote our local businesses, you know, there is a number of initiatives that we are working on and and a number of banks, to be quite honest with you, that we are in talks with about bringing branches to South Dade in order to bring a stronger banking presence in our community. There are a number of banks, obviously, in Miami-Dade County, but as you travel farther and farther south, you see a lot fewer branches, right? So we are talking with banks to try and get them invested in our South Dade community, whether it's opening a branch office or investing in different initiatives that we have. You know, there, there is a lot that can be done, but we are also looking at CARES Act funding. I don't know whether or not you have applied for that second round that just became available to small business owners, but I know that those applications are forthcoming and really about distributing information that's being made available to us to get us all through this very difficult time. There are programs that our previous District Eight Commissioner initiated that I plan to continue and build out in even greater detail called Accelerate South Dade, where we focus on small businesses and offering resources to small businesses to help grow and navigate in this ever-changing and difficult market. So Eddie, I hope to meet you in person. If not, please send me an email and we can continue the conversation. If you have specific ideas on what you'd like to see implemented in South Dade, please feel free to let me know as well. I always welcome ideas, but thank you very much, Eddie, for your question.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner McGee, I'm going to pose this one to you because I know that this is something that's one of your priorities in in your new role. For 56 days leading up to Thanksgiving, there has been a shooting in South Dade, 90% of which has ended in fatality. What plans, if any, are there to address the rising crime rates in the South Dade area?
Yeah, that's the, and that's a great question. As a matter of fact, the sad reality is that while I was preparing for this meeting, my detective just called me and texted me and let me know that there was another shooting. It's just, it's just, it's, it's sad. Secondly, I am moving, I'm going to push a resolution to possibly declare Miami-Dade County a emergency, a declaration of emergency right now as relates to gun violence. Thirdly, I'm actually reaching out to the Fed. We're going to have a conversation about bringing FBI in along with other task force to join forces to deal with the gun violence. The issue of this becoming, there are 90% of the fatalities. I don't know if that number is is one I can stand next to, but what I can tell you is one fatality is too many, especially in a community where everybody knows everyone and especially in a community where the love is real and that is a real community. So we're going to address it from a standpoint of partnering with the federal government. We're going to tackle it from the standpoint of job. But more than anything, again, this is a combination of lots of things that have gone wrong in the South Dade community. Exposure, a lack of reliable transportation, jobs, affordability, homes, and more than anything, health. So we have to look at it from a holistic standpoint, something I'm working on now with community leaders and victims.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McGee. I think for the group, are there, do we know if there are any testing, COVID-19 testing and vaccination? I think more vaccination sites, south of 152nd to Florida City. I know that there are quite a few testing sites. If there are no vaccination sites, why not? And are there any plans to implement them?
Recently, I turned the South Dade Baptist, Second Baptist Church into a vaccination pod. I reached out to the director of the Emergency Management, Jared Noskowitz. And so we were able to secure 500 vaccine valves for 500 patients that we were able to vaccinate. Secondly, I am in talks with the director again. I'm looking to bring one to Florida City. I'm looking to bring one to Homestead and possibly one over in the Cutler Bay area. But I'm working now on the, the reality, well, I'm faced with the reality that the, there is a shortage that we're seeing between federal government and the state government, which fails to trick, uh, trickulate to the, to the South Dade community.
Really quick, if I can mention something because it's in the questions. The reason I mentioned the Beacon Council is because it is almost fully funded by Miami-Dade County. So when we talk about economic development, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is all the different committees and all the different entities that receive money directly from Miami-Dade County to do this kind of work. That doesn't mean that the Board of County Commissioners doesn't want to do the work. That means that over time, we have created entities that receive that funding and now we're going to make sure that they're all doing their job and that they're in line with what our community needs. So we're not, we're not passing the buck. Those are just the entities that do the work and I think we're going to be reevaluating them and reevaluating their funding.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Regalado. The next question is, we have two more questions and we, again, we try to be really good on time. I, I, you know, slated it for an hour, going a little bit over, but two more questions. Commissioner Higgins, you mentioned that there are some planned capital projects slated for this year. Are there any opportunities for small business owners within the South Dade districts to bid on these projects?
Yeah, I mean, when we go through procurement, I mean, that happens every year annually. There has to, you know, there, I encourage our South Dade small businesses to plug into the county and and get into that procurement process and seek help from the county. There's even programs at the county that will help you fill out these applications. And so if you've never done it before, reach out to my office and we will point you in the right direction to connect you with the right people on how to do it. Even if you don't get the contract this first year, you'll be better prepared for procurement the following year because you would have learned so, so much throughout that process. So absolutely, you can apply. Obviously, there's going to be requirements, licensing and insurance and all of those things. But assuming all of that is in place, I absolutely encourage our South Dade businesses to go through our procurement process and see if you can be awarded a contract with our county.
I would just like to add something really quick to that. Commissioner Higgins is completely right. But one of the things that's going to be happening in the next few months is that our COO, Jimmy Morales, is working on procurement reform. One of the concerns that small businesses have is that our procurement takes on average 300 days and we actually pay at the 90-day or 120-day rate. So one thing is the process. The other thing is how long can they wait to be paid by Miami-Dade County? And I'm sure it's one of the things that we're going to weigh in on when that reform comes to the Board of County Commissioners.
This is a very general question for all three commissioners, but what are your thoughts on the urban development boundary line? Maintaining or?
Well, I mean, I, I think this, I don't know if you guys, if it came up in your, in your campaign, I think we're all pretty clear, you know, on, on the UDB. I think there was some confusion at our last meeting because there was an item that had to do with applications for the UDB. And it was actually increasing the amounts that are charged for those applications and changing when those applications can be done. It's actually part of three changes that are going to happen in terms of zoning. So I don't think anybody's talking about moving the UDB. It was just the procedure of when we hear those applications as a Board of County Commissioners.
I'm going to take one more question. This is going to be our last question. To actually, commissioners, we've seen a boom in bicycle use, bicycle use and pedestrian activity in South Dade. And as a South Dade resident, I know it's not safe for most of our residents to participate in these activities safely. So what plans do you have, if any, to make our streets safer and make Miami-Dade County a place where you don't need a car to be safe on the streets?
Yeah, if I can answer that, I mean, District Eight, there's a lot of cyclists. And if you travel up and down Old Cutler Road in the morning or in the early afternoon, you are likely to, you know, be sharing the roadway with our cyclists. And this is an important issue because people move to South Dade for canopy trees and our winding roads and our scenic, you know, paths, but our roadways are not equipped to handle them. And so I have been speaking with some of our very vocal cyclist champions in South Dade and look forward to putting forth some, some initiatives to help with the issue. You know, obviously, cycle lanes are the obvious fix, but where can they go and where will they be utilized by our cyclists? I know Old Cutler Road is used all through going up to the Gables and into Commissioner Regalado's district. And so I look forward to working with her on how we can address this issue. And it's not safe. I mean, the number of times we hear cyclists being injured or being, you know, hit on their bicycles, it's a very real and a very serious issue. So it's something that I look forward to tackling and looking, working with my colleagues on.
So really quick, I'll add to that. We're actually working on an agenda item that addresses some of this and it allows, it's going to allow us to bring the, the public and private sector together for the intersections so that we can create more connectivity. We're actually going to be rolling out a countywide map that shows sort of intersections that are important for cyclists and intersections that are important for pedestrians. Which ones are going to be done by FDOT, which ones are going to be done by Miami-Dade County? And which ones we're going to ask for partners like Chambers, if they want to adopt one, if they want to help. There's going to be two different tracks. One has to do with infrastructure and one has to do with maintenance. It's going to be a great opportunity for people to engage. And I think now more than ever, you know, our parks, our trails, our bike paths have become so important, not only because it provided us an outlet during the pandemic, but because it's providing us a sense of community and unity.
Okay, so that was our last question. Again, I'm going to reiterate, you know, if you are in unincorporated Miami-Dade County or even if you're a part of a municipality, commissioners are an incredible, your first, almost your first level, if you're on a municipality, your first level of government. So it's extremely important that you maintain a good relationship with your commissioner's office. I'm going to give you everyone's email addresses right now. They're real easy. District7@miamidade.gov, District8@miamidade.gov, and District9@miamidade.gov. Feel free to email your commissioners, reach out to them. If you have any questions about anything, whether they can help you or point you in the right direction of someone who can, that's what they're there for. They're here to serve. Obviously, our businesses, our residents, our community. And again, I'm so inspired, so thrilled, so excited to be working with all three of you and have this unified, unified collective voice for our South Dade community, something that we've needed for quite some time now. So once again, okay, so we're at 137. But once again, thank you so much for your time, for being with us here. And thank you all for attending and I hope you have a wonderful day. That concludes our meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.